I'll open the meeting. First, welcome. Please be advised that your voice or and as I do.
Lynn, we're not hearing you. We're only hearing every few words.
Jim? Oh, great. Okay.
Try again. We can hear you now.
Okay. I'll open the meeting. Meeting. Welcome. Please.
Technical difficulties.
Lynn, we're not hearing anything you're saying, Lynn. Maybe call in from your house phone instead of using your internet? I think we're assuming that you're calling in on another line. We can't hear anything if you are speaking on your current Zoom login.
She muted on hers, but I'm sure you can see that.
Yeah, I've asked her to unmute.
I don't see you're coming in as a phone call either.
She down the cape?
I don't think so.
I can't see your car.
All right, she just, I'm gonna guess that's her.
7C3, are you gonna ask her to mute?
Yeah. Lynn, is that you? 7334?
This be me.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, let's try this again. Let me see.
Actually, Lynn, can you hold on? There's an echo. If you close your other internet, if you close the other login on your tablet, that will hopefully get rid of the echo.
I don't know what you mean.
You're talking on the phone and you also have it open on a computer or a tablet. Close it on the computer and tablet and just use the phone.
Okay. Okay, so leave the meeting.
Well, stay on the phone. You'll be attending the meeting by phone.
Okay, we getting an echo now?
No.
Nope, much better.
Okay, let's try this again. I'll open the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for November 23rd. Welcome to everyone. Please be advised that your voice or and image may be recorded as part of the record of this meeting. I'll do a roll call and I'll ask to go around. I'm Lynn Ryan. I'm on the phone. Jim?
Here.
Pat?
Yep.
Ginny?
Here.
Jenny?
Yeah.
Susanna?
Here.
And Keith?
Here.
And we have Leanne, the clerk for the land use boards.
Here.
I'd like to change slightly the order of the agenda tonight. We have a continuation of the Capes of Berlin, but before that, I'd like us to pick our next meeting date. I'm expecting that we will want Amy at the next meeting and I checked with her for her availability. Our next meeting would normally be December 9th. And in order to have Amy with us, we would need to meet like at 5:30 or 6 o'clock. She already has a meeting at 7 o'clock.
This is for December 9th?
This would be if we want to keep our regular meeting date for December 9th.
Those times work for me. Keith?
Is there anyone who can't attend at 5:30 or 6 o'clock on the 9th?
I think I can make it. I might be a few minutes late.
They'll still love you.
That's what I love about you, Lynn.
Is there, is there anyone that cannot make it other than Suzanne may be a little tardy? Okay, then let's keep our regular meeting for December 9th. And let's set a start time for the meeting tentatively at 5:30. Any hearing we might be going to have for 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Let's go ahead and I'll, we'll open the hearing for the Capes of Berlin. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we open the meeting for the Capes of Berlin.
Second.
Okay, Denny seconded that. We'll do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Keith, and I'm a yes. I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing until 6:00 PM on December 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Keith?
Yep.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so I'll continue the hearing, so I'd like us to discuss if anyone has any questions about chapter 201 of the Acts of 2020. If you don't, have you had a chance to?
Will this include the draft letter?
Well, that's, that's the next step.
Okay, I'll wait for the next step.
Okay, the next step is to review the draft notice that's gonna go to the town clerk.
Okay. I have a question?
Sure.
Okay, when you say that they need to submit an electric format suitable for virtual display at hearings, you might mean electronic format? And if they don't know what a suitable format is, who do they contact to find out? Just the emails listed?
Well, Leanne.
Okay.
I would think they would call the ZBA if they have a question. Okay, so we wanna change. Let me get to my copy of that. Suitable for virtual display, as it appears.
Do we know of a standard format for that?
What do we wanna change the wording in that bullet?
It says electric format and it should say electronic format.
Fair enough. Let's make it electronic. I happened to notice one other thing, Leanne.
Yeah.
And that was that the paragraph that starts section 33. The second line is supersede. It should be plural.
Supersede, yeah, okay.
Does anyone have anything else or disagree with it or wanna talk about it?
Well, do we have a defined format for what is considered acceptable?
Okay.
Too small of a house.
Okay.
Well, to answer Jim's question, I think that's why I was asking who do they contact if they don't know what a suitable format is, because it could be anything from Word doc to a PDF to a JPG.
Well, and any of them would be acceptable as long as that they're, I can
Readable.
They're readable. I can forward them out and people are able to open them.
Well, why would we not put that in the notice of you know, give examples of acceptable formats so that people know?
That's true. We could say what our preference is for the format.
That's true.
They do hard copies on everything still too, right?
Yes, they're supposed to. The problem is
I said in addition to.
Yeah, with town offices being closed, it's hard for everybody to get in to come and get their copy if they want one.
Well, that's, that's why I said in addition to the Berlin zoning bylaw submission requirements, in other words, 10 plans and all of that. This is an add-on. So do we wanna say, and Leanne, I'll let you do the changing of this.
Okay.
Berlin town clerk in electronic format suitable for virtual display at hearings such as or including, and then list some of them. Is that what you folks want?
Yeah.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm not sure what the acceptable formats are, but if we're gonna accept, for example, a Word document or a PDF document or JPGs or PNG images, you know, whatever those may be, I'm not sure what all is considered acceptable and what isn't.
That's why I was thinking we could say preferably heating a format, because we know that that format won't change from one application to another. Hi Ted.
See the Snickers bar. He's leaving. He's heading out the door. I'm gonna probably be the only one to still gonna want a hard copy.
Right, 'cause you always have issues opening yours, Ted.
Just, I'm not here that much in the house. I'd rather have it with me if I'm running around. I get 20 minutes at the bar or something to read them. I want the hard copy. That's part of the initial they have to do anyway, right? Yeah.
Does anybody else have a preferences to the format, specific preference?
I think I'd also like a hard copy.
Yep.
Oh, did you mean electronic preference?
Yes.
PDF for me.
Yeah. Any of it works for me too, but.
I'll take a hard copy too.
Okay, very hard. You guys are so old school.
I know. I don't care.
We're oldies but goodies.
Do we wanna limit ourselves? I'm just wondering, like the plot plans, what are they gonna be in?
Well, I'm just trying to look now. The ones submitted for Capes of Berlin, the last ones submitted were submitted as a PDF.
Yeah, that's the way it's usually sent when it goes to, say, Neshoba Blueprint for printing the large formats. They're usually sent as PDF, so it's not unreasonable to ask for that format.
Okay.
Do we wanna limit it to PDF?
No.
What other forms would be? Word doc?
Well, actually, I like PDF. That seems to be the only one on successful opening, but would it be Word doc? It's just so hard to read them from the copy on your computer. And that's why I'm requesting a hard copy.
The PDF format won't change when you open it up, whereas if you open up a Word document and you don't have the same font as the one they made it in, it's gonna move everything around and it's not gonna look the same.
Oh, yeah. In other words, if they have a higher version of Word than you do on your computer.
Right.
Version of Word.
It also opens them up to whoever's submitting it, unless they put a password on it, someone else can edit it after they've submitted it, and I don't think that an applicant would want that.
That's true.
We're gonna want, I hear two things. One is extra copies.
Yep.
And we're also gonna want
PDF format.
Electronic PDF format. Do we wanna do that? Electronic PDF format?
That's pretty standard. I don't see where anybody would have an issue, you know, being able to do that.
The only thing I can think of that might be an issue with doing PDF is if they have a spreadsheet. You can't really do an Excel spreadsheet in PDF.
We can export it.
Scan it and put it into a PDF, right?
Or like a report. It's not an actual spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So can you scan it and put it in a PDF file?
No, you don't even have to do that. You can, when, if you're in Excel, you can either print it to a printer or you can print it to a PDF.
Yeah, the problem with that is if, for example, somebody wants to submit a a cost accounting or something to us and they export it to a PDF file, the only thing you get is the PDF. So you can't change and view it in a different way or sort it differently or anything else. You're stuck with whatever they exported. So you lose all the spreadsheet functionality of having it as a, when you have it in a PDF.
But if we get, tell them Excel is okay, we can open them in a PDF format, right?
Well, we could, you could open it in Excel or we could convert it to PDF ourselves.
All right, so we wanna say PDF?
Or Excel.
No, and.
Okay.
Electronic formats. Suitable for, electronic formats. Electronic PDF or and Excel formats suitable for virtual display. Would that be the way that we wanna go?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And we're gonna want, let's see, in addition to the Berlin zoning board yeah, Berlin zoning bylaw submission requirements. We're gonna want what, seven additional copies of all documents and plans?
I need one.
But don't you get one of the 10 that's submitted?
I never get 10.
Okay, let's make it eight.
Yeah, but we need at least eight, 'cause there's seven board members and myself, so we need a minimum of eight.
But we want those in addition to what they normally submit.
Oh, what, they normally submit?
Well, in the requirement, in the requirement, they're supposed to submit 10 copies.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't say, I didn't hear you say in addition to. No, if they submit the 10, that should be sufficient.
Well, no, because we've gotta give it to Board of Health. We've gotta give it to Conervation, Planning, what?
Well, I guess whatever, I'm not sure exactly what gets submitted. When it gets submitted, Ellie gives it to all the, Ellie being the town clerk, gives it to all the other boards who are required to get it, and then she gives me what's left. So sometimes I end up with three, sometimes five, sometimes sometimes one. So, yeah, we need eight plus whatever the other, how many other boards are there? Is it planning, Board of Health, building? Who else?
So let's say in addition to the Berlin zoning bylaw submission requirement, an additional eight hard copies of all documents and plans must be simultaneously submitted. Let's see. No, we don't want it to vote. Let's make a separate sentence and say after we say the end of that first bullet, let's say additional eight copies of all plans, hard, an additional eight copies of hard plan, yeah, an additional eight copies of all plans and documents in someone come up with the wording.
An additional eight copies of all plans and documents must be submitted.
An additional eight hard copies of all plans and documents.
Okay. Must be submitted. All right. Lynn, I'll, I'll work on this and run it by you again before I give it to Ellie.
Okay, and is the return receipt, okay? The next bullet? You're the one that gets back with that, Leanne.
Yep. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Everybody happy?
Sure am. Oh, yeah.
All right, that's the way we'll do it then. The next item on the agenda is reappointments. And I saw on the agenda for the selectmen tonight. They have Jim, Ginny, and Susanna's reappointments, so we should hear about that tomorrow. Just as a point of information, you'll need to make arrangements with the town clerk to be sworn in prior to our next meeting.
Okay.
2931 is the phone number. Okay, approval, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. We do have thing, two things upcoming. One is 150, what is it, 157? It's for 157 Lyman Road. This is the one that is the in-law apartment for the new house. And I'm gonna set that up for January. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine. Have they started building it yet?
I have no idea. Do you, Leanne?
They've started building the house. I don't know about the apartment, what they've done. So January's date would be the 13th.
January's date would be?
Yeah, the 13th. That's the second Wednesday.
Okay, and let's set that for 7:30. We probably won't have it until 8:30, 'cause we'll probably have a continuation of our December
Right.
meeting. I owe you a hearing notice for that. I didn't do it because didn't wanna do it until after December 1st.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we do that. Now we have approval of minutes.
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Keith?
Yep.
And I'm a yes. Anyone have anything else? Do we have any other petitions out there?
Nope, that's the only one I received was 157 Lyman Road, but we also haven't sent out this notice to the C3 Industries and the woman for the, at the veterinary hospital to now see if they wanna move forward.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Leanne to send out to those two folks a copy of this notice electronically or otherwise that we're resuming hearings. So we may hear back from one or both of those.
Correct, but as of now, the only application we received was the 157 Lyman Road.
Right, that's the only one that's in the pipeline.
Correct.
So we'll make that 7:30 in January. And if we send these out December 1st, you might wanna also give them the deadline for
Right.
notifications if they wanna get on the docket.
Right. Right, when they would have to apply to get on for January.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was, I sent a note and I don't know if this is gonna work, but I asked Margaret if there's any way that we could make plans available to the general public. In other words, we have a Saturday, you make an appointment, you can come see the plans in person. She seemed to think that was possible. I don't know if that's gonna pan out. She seemed to think that was possible. I don't know if that's gonna pan out. She was saying we could find a big room at the town hall, and we could disinfect it in between people, and, I mean, I, I don't know. What do you folks think?
This is in general for anything?
Well, this is for, um, those plans that are difficult to visualize, as far as I'm concerned. I'm thinking in terms of, um, uh, the Capes of Berlin, maybe we could do it. I don't know. I don't even know what the legality of it is.
Right, because you can't necessarily send them electronically to the individuals who want them either, right?
And they can't... You know, I mean, some of these are gonna be hard to see.
Yeah.
Unless you're on, like, an iPad or something where you can enlarge it.
Mm-hmm.
And even then, I don't know, you know?
We don't have a big window. We can just tape it up in the window?
There you go.
Well, the only thing with that is, is usually, um, eight plans, 10 plans.
And all the windows are up on the second floor. You only have the lobby area where the drop box is, and there's not a lot of room in there.
Again, you know, I don't know financially what it impacts, but how many copies? What do you need? Why can't they just be available, too? They run off X amount of copies? There can't be that many people that want them.
Those are pretty expensive to, to print off instead of, you know, if you've got 15-page drawings and you've gotta, you know, those, one cop, one set of those is probably 150 bucks.
Not that, he's giving us the small ones, though, the regular eight-by-elevens.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't see anything on those.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Could they put an easel up on the lobby there and have them come in and they can flip through the pages?
I'm just...
Well, let's see what I can do with Margaret. Like I say, I suggested to her, um, you know, or asked her if there's any way. I don't know where we would do it. Um, I would think it would probably be somewhere like our hearing room, where we can open the windows and spend plenty of money on, uh, heating, um, and maybe make appointments. I wanna run it by Amy, though, before we do it. I don't know if it's legal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I envision a lot of problems with that.
I, I do, too. I'm just trying to find a way to help the abutters.
Yeah, I, I get it. I just, you know, if, if, for example, you know, we, we do this on a Saturday or something, somebody's gotta sit there in the room, and you're gonna get asked questions. So when the abutter comes over and says, "What does this mean?", you know, you basically have to tell them, "I can't, I can't answer you", because it's up to the submitter to explain their drawing. We can't take on the responsibility of explaining what something means. You know, I, I certainly can't sit there and say, "Well, this, this drawing means whatever", and the expla, you know, I can give an explanation, but what if I'm wrong? Now, with the abutters, you know, who do they blame if they got the wrong impression from that?
Yeah, I think we could limit it and just say, "You can see the plans, you know, you cannot be discussed or whatever", but I still wanna run it by Amy, because I don't know if technically that's a meeting. Um, you know, let her give us guidance. I'm just looking for a way to make people more comfortable, and maybe I'm making it more convoluted. So let's see what we can come up with before the next meeting. How does that sound?
Good.
Okay, um...
Madam, I know that, um, in the audience, we have Mark Rhodes and Dennis Minnick still, and he's, Mr. Minnick has his hand raised.
Well, if he wants to talk about something in general and nothing specific, um, he's welcome.
Do you want me to, uh, turn on his, his phone? Then, yes.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Minnick, I'm turning on your phone. You are allowed to speak.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I, Lynn, I appreciate the word you were using about being able to share the information in some way, shape or form with your butters. And, uh, whatever I have to do to accommodate whatever you come up with, I would certainly appreciate it, and I will cooperate with whatever you decide.
Well, we'll try. Let's see if it's legal and, okay?
Yeah, that, I, I appreciate you, uh, taking that position, and, um, and if, for some reason it turns out that it's not, uh, maybe I have to figure out what to do to be able to see this stuff, 'cause right now I can't see anything, so. But I appreciate it. Maybe, maybe some, somehow, or way before the night, uh, you could, uh, email me of what I should do or what I need to do to be able to, you know, view and see whatever form you come up with.
Well, let's see if we can do it, and if we can do it, um, I'll let you know. I expect that maybe it will be after the next meeting that the plans will be available.
Oh, okay. I, see, I don't understand the timing and what, what's gonna be presented and when and where, but when, whenever the plans would be, um, available, like I said, I would do whatever I need to do to accommodate whatever you came up with. But I appreciate your thoughts, really.
We'll try.
Thank you so much. Everybody, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna bring you back down to attendance. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, um, is there anything else we need to discuss? If not, I think we can have a roll call to adjourn.
So moved.
Did you get the first and second, Leanne?
I got Keith, and was it Danny?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Jim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.